With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. The time being 6:30 PM, the meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table in the back of the room. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
For Gensweller.
Here.
Vienna McKenzie.
Here.
Jamie Kane.
Here.
Darryl Pulling.
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from January 10, 2023. Any edits, additions, or corrections? If not, take a motion to approve those as presented.
Still moved.
Motion has been made by Rick, second by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You all should have received a copy of the minutes from January 31st, 2023, special meeting. Any edits, additions, or corrections? If not, take a motion to approve those as presented.
Still moved.
Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? There being no old business, we'll move directly to new business. Up first, John Bryant is here with us this evening from the Verdis Group. A little bit of an update, John is with the Verdis Group, who is our owner's representative for the Street Department and Fire Station campus on North Broadway. And in the meantime, we're thinking monthly, maybe here at the beginning, we'll do every other month or so, but an update to both the Board of Works and the City Council about what's happening with the project, and then occasionally with the building corporation members as well. So, good evening, John. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Council. My name is John Bryant, again, with Verdis Group, served as the owner's rep on the municipal complex projects. Each month or every other month, we'll give updates, kind of just based off of what we're going through in construction or design, where we're at right now, or we stand with these projects. So, we'll just touch base on construction document, progress, schedule, fire station, and the Street Department design, as well as just briefly touch base on budget at the end. So, the biggest thing that we're trying to accomplish right now with what DLZ is getting to a 100% completion set for construction documents, those are expected March 9th. Those won't be signed and sealed at that point, but they will be waiting for QC review and review from city staff. We did have our first preliminary tech review meeting with the city staff last week with DLZ and their civil team to review the stormwater management plan, the site plan, as well as stormwater quality plan. We did get some good feedback from the city staff on that. That was relayed over to DLZ for them to incorporate into their set that they will submit tomorrow. And again, that is all based off of the set that we have right now, which is a 60% construction document set that we are, that we're working through. So, understanding and knowing that we just want to get as much feedback now as we can in order to stay ahead of the game is greatly appreciated. And I know Sarah and Zeke and the rest of the team have been very understanding in that process. So, we are continuing to coordinate weekly meetings with DLZ Chief Mark and the rest of the city staff just to keep the project moving and on schedule. We are expecting mobilization will occur in April with site work beginning in May or early June. As we have talked about and discussed from day one, we are currently on schedule for a substantial completion in late spring of 2024. So, we are continuing to push and enforce that. That is our expectation and the city's expectation that that is completed by then. The fire station and the street department buildings in and of themselves, and specifics to the fire station, we are working through interior finishes, building enclosure, as well as owner FFE items that Chief and I are working through. We are also prioritizing for both projects, a procurement log of longer lead time issues, given the BOT statute and the availability that we have to procure materials now is a big pro in that sense. So, we are looking into the switchgear transformers, generators, as I'm sure you guys are aware of, that have substantial lead time issues of getting the loads and the sizing requirements for those so we can get those procured now to save any headaches in the future. So, that is forthcoming here in the coming weeks. In relation to the Street Department building, Runabomb has engaged their architect. They continue working through their floor layouts and their floor plans. So, we continue to coordinate that with the civil design for utilities and locates. So, that is ongoing. We are coordinating a meeting with them next week to engage them with DLZ's civil team and the architectural team to bring everybody onboard and on track for those projects. And again, this is all dependent on a permitting process, but our intent and our goal is to have some sort of early foundations package for both projects, pending items approval and state release for those in order to get those up and running so that once we do have the pre-engineered metal building structure that was ordered two weeks ago, is expected to arrive in June, we'll have a foundation hopefully shortly thereafter in order to erect that rather quickly. So, that is our intent and what we are shooting at right now. Lastly, in relation to budget, I know obviously this is a GM development procurement through a BOT process, is understanding that there's a GMP that was set at 19908-142 that has not and will not change through any change orders or anything of that nature. The project does remain on budget to where we're at in the construction documents phase at 60%, and we'll continue to track that as we get closer to 100% set. But we haven't had to engage any BE exercises or alternates lately, which is a good thing that we're staying on track and on budget from that perspective. So, that does conclude my update for both the Street Department and the Fire Station projects. If you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, resign.
Thanks, John. Travel safe.
Appreciate it.
Up next, we have the Director of Decatur County Health Department, Sean Durbin. He had asked me a couple of weeks ago to come and chat with all of you about some updates happening over there. So, good evening, Sean.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Marsh, Council, and other officials for allowing me to come. I did, you sent out the documents, I sent out the PowerPoint.
Those are in your folders.
Can I go ahead and hook up or?
You should be able to just plug into the HDMI there.
I'm gonna go through this very briefly because I know you all can read. Right? Okay. So, for those who don't know, Governor Holcomb started last year with, two years ago now, with a very large initiative. It was called the Governor's Task Force, Healthcare Task Force at the time. Now, it's the Governor's Public Health Commission. And we are going to do this, yeah, here we go. Okay, so I'm not even reading the notes. Here's where Indiana is right now in public health, and it's pretty sad. I mean, you can see, we do a great job of business. We are very business friendly in Indiana and Decatur County, obviously. We do well on opportunity, we do well on education. But if you look on the other column on public health, not so good. Being 45th out of 50 in smoking and tobacco use is not really what we want to brag about. 46th in the BC, 43rd in mental health, and 41st in childhood immunizations. I will say that Decatur County does rank better than the state average on almost all of these. Not smoking and tobacco use, unfortunately, not fucking around. And this is the scariest one right here, is the fact that our life expectancy has gone down, and this is pre-COVID numbers. And they actually dropped, and they dropped more after COVID, obviously. This is largely attributed to the opioid issue, but there's some other things too. Obviously, all of the factors we just talked about on the previous slide have a lot to do with lower life expectancies. But our life expectancy in Indiana is only 77 and is two years lower than the national average. These are the things that are, have caused the governor to do this. So, 45th for public health expenditures out of 50. 90 or 94 local health departments are below the 25th percentile, and most all of our funding comes from local funding. So, they came up with some recommendations, and they are to define the core services that public health has. This was done by traveling around to all the local health departments. They interviewed every single local health department to see what the status was at the time and what needed to be improved. So, what they did was actually evidence-based to see what core public services we have, not just what we have, but where we need to expand. So, we'll talk real briefly here on, these are the core services right now. These are the things that we are mandated by the state and not funded by the state. We're funded only by county government here with the exception of a couple of grants. So, the state's asking us to do, telling us we have to do all these things without giving us any money. And so, these are the main ones that we are in charge of, but these are the ones they want to add. So, we've got tobacco, maternal infant mortality, health equity, harm reduction for trauma injury prevention, and school health liaison, full-time public health nurse. I'm proud to say that we have hired a school liaison already, so we're ahead of the curve on this, and we have a public health nurse. We've always had a public health nurse. That is not required by the state. A lot of people don't know that. So, here's where we're at. The Local Health Maintenance Fund is one of the grants we get. It adds about $30 per capita to our budget. And, but it's just minor compared to our full budget. It's not a whole lot of money. Runs maybe $50,000 a year. It goes up and down, roughly $50,000 a year. So, the state is looking to fund local health departments. This is on Senate Bill 4, which is before the Senate now. It's actually passed out of committee. It passed out 12 to nothing in favor of to go to the floor. We've got about four hearings, I believe, before April 29th was when they expect this to close. So, these are the workforce recommendations. So, one of the things we want to do is work on some of the shortages that we have in the workforce. We want to work on training enhancement and recruiting, retention and recruiting, excuse me. The training right now is piecemeal. Every county does their own training. There is no one training for health departments. So, we'd like to see that more uniform across the state. Emergency preparedness, I think that's probably been on, most people didn't know what emergency preparedness was at a health department until we had COVID, if you remember that. And that kind of brought it to the forefront where we had some deficiencies, both at the local level, at the state level, and at the federal level in the COVID response. First one here is the state strategic stockpile. So, the state has stockpiles of many different things, but the one in particular during COVID was PPE. And it was really sad when we got it. It had not been updated since Obama came into office. So, we went through the whole Obama presidency and most of the Trump presidency without it being updated, which meant we had expired PPE. We had masks, when we got masks, which was hard to get, they were expired and just not a safe thing to be putting out there as PPE. So, they're working on increasing that. Emergency medical services is another area that the state has some real issues in, both because attracting people into that field is very difficult now, and the pay is not where it probably ought to be for what they're doing. And then enhancing the trauma system. A lot of this is getting into the hospital side of things, but this is where this money is going to go. So, right now, Decatur County is considered kind of a trauma desert. It's 45 minutes to the nearest trauma center for us, and we're one of the few areas in the state that that happens. So, they are looking at specifically Greensburg, Decatur County, right now, to do some things to update to get us to where we're closer than 45 minutes. I don't know exactly what it means yet. I don't think they're gonna build a trauma hospital, but they're looking at some ways to make that happen. I'm taking a lot of your time. I appreciate it, but I'm gonna hurry. So, you know, this is basically where we're getting at. I have some different slideshow. That wasn't even the slideshow you guys had. What we're looking at is completely being funded by the local county government still, they will have to fund us at the same rate they do for this grant to go through. But they will increase our funding. Right now, the national average for per capita funding for public health is $91. Indiana's at $55. Their goal is to get this to increase it enough that it goes to $81 per capita, $80. I really do know what I'm talking about. I do this. Got a little lost, sorry. $80 some dollars. Let's just say that. How's that? So, at any rate, I'm gonna close there. I just wanted you all to be aware of it. What I would actually really like is some input on what you all would like to see. I'm not asking you to do this right now, but as we put a plan together, I don't want this to be where, hey, the state's giving us beaucoup bucks here and we can just do whatever we want. We need to do evidence-based, what does this community need? And that's really why I'm here to present, is I'm asking you, what does this community need in public health? I want to know from people who are, you know, really truly working with the public and dealing with these issues. This becomes an economic development issue. The costs to industry are enormous for their healthcare costs, preventative costs for every dollar invested in public health has a return on investment of $8. So, that would be, if somebody gave me that offer with my own money, I'd be all over it. So, if you can just kind of think about it, give me a call at the health department if you've got some ideas. I would really appreciate it, and I appreciate your time. Any questions?
On the one slide you've got on how Indiana ranks nationally, do we have that broke down on how Decatur County ranks within Indiana?
I can get it. I don't have it right now. The problem with it is we're good on some metrics, we're better on some metrics, we're worse on other metrics. And how they actually came up with those metrics, I'm not 100% sure. So, I don't have that individual data at the county level.
I was just thinking, if we had that, that might help. If we knew we were a lot worse in certain things, maybe that's where we start, right?
I have, yeah, and I have actually the county health rankings, and it breaks it down by categories, to various categories that I would be happy to send to the mayor, and maybe he could send it out to everybody. It's fairly, fairly long documents though, but I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, how much time and effort would it take to possibly put, maybe put a survey out? I mean...
We have time for that.
I mean...
We have time for that. This, you know, we've got till April 29th before this goes through. And I don't know what that means. Once it gets through the legislature, I don't know that that means they're gonna start throwing money at us. I kind of doubt it because we've already done the one grant, the local health maintenance and trust that's been helping to support us already for this calendar year, not the fiscal year. So, I would anticipate this starts on the calendar year. But again, I want to have that planned. I think a survey is a great idea.
The Governor's Public Health Commission's requesting a $250 million annual funding from the general fund. The first year is half of that, if I recall correctly, and some extremely high percentage, 95% plus, has to be given to local governments, local health departments. It can't just be absorbed by the state, is that correct?
That is correct. The state, however, is looking to expand some of their regional support teams, which would help us a lot.
And then, if I also recall correctly, it's like 80/20 funding in that the county has to contribute 20% of the funding needed to get the health department wherever, and they would contribute the other 80%.
That's correct, and we're already at that 20% threshold, so it would not require an increase from the county at all.
They've also taken a pretty strong interest. Senate Bill 1 is the mental health bill. Is that going to be applicable to this as well or not?
Yeah, so they really go hand in hand with Decatur County ranking still on mental health care. I was really thrilled to see that that was out there. But mental health is a component of what they're asking us to do with this new public health funding as well. So, both can go. They would go hand in hand. One of the things about the money, again, I say I don't want this, just throw money at me, and I don't know what to do with it. We are able to use this to help fund some of our partner agencies. So, we don't necessarily have to read them. If there's a good agency out there that's underfunded and could really help us in the public health sphere, we would use some of this money to help fund them. They would write a grant to us and we could put this out as a grant, so.
To your knowledge, do we have any psychologists in the county that operate in the county?
That operate in the county, not affiliated with either the hospital or the Centerstone?
I don't think they have either. I don't think either of them have one.
There are two psychologists employed at Decatur County Memorial Hospital, at least two. And I don't know about Centerstone for sure.
Obviously, that's a big part of conversation in rehabilitation, jail, and with the sheriff and the police department, getting those resources in the right place, so.
And again, mental health and the public health aspect of that, I mean, I'd much rather get people treatment than have to get Mike to throw them in jail. So, it's cheaper for all of us that way. So, mental health, just to let you know, our ratio of providers to citizens in Decatur County is 2,950 to 1. It doesn't get much worse, honestly. I mean, that's 3,000 people for, I mean, yeah, for each therapist.
Final question, I guess. The county commissioners, I believe it's the commissioners, have to accept the funding from the state. Is that correct?
I believe the council and commissioners both have to approve this, correct?
Okay. We, this body doesn't have anything to do with that, but we could be supportive of the county accepting those funds in order to benefit public health for all Decatur County residents.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Council, any further questions for Sean? Thanks for the update. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very informative. Thank you.
I appreciate all your time. I know it took a lot of your time, and you have a lot of business to get done, so I appreciate it.
Fine. Thank you very much for reaching out. Appreciate it. Up next, Chief McNeely with the retirement of special guest Stephen Barnes.
Evening, Council. I bring for you Detective Steve Barnes. Steve has submitted his letter of resignation by retirement to our office, and we did accept it. But I do have just a document I prepared. I want to read to you guys, just highlighting Steve's career and his 25 years of service. Steve Barnes's father served as a reserve officer in Xenia, Ohio, and in Rushville, Indiana, which began Steve's interest in law enforcement in his child development years. Steve joined the Police Explorers Program in 1984 in Rushville, Indiana at the age of 16. Following graduation at Rushville High School, Steve enrolled at Bensin's University, where he graduated 1991 on the Dean's List with an Associate's Degree of Science in Law Enforcement. Steve began working as a loss prevention officer in 1991 and continued that work until in 1994, when he was hired by the Indianapolis Public School Police Department. Steve attended the 101st class of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. He graduated in the top quarter of his class and qualified expert with his firearm. Steve graduated the academy on June 23rd, 1995. Steve was hired by the Greensburg Police Department by the late Honorable Frank Manus, began his career at the Greensburg Police Department on January 1st, 1998. Having worked with the police department before, at a police department before, he quickly worked his way through the probationary status, was promoted to first-class patrolman on September 8th, 1998. During his time as patrolman, Steve did a temporary duty assignment with the Greensburg Investigators in 2000, which lasted one year. Steve worked patrol duties as a patrolman until his promotion to sergeant in 2003. Steve served the next 12 years as sergeant patrolling the streets of Greensburg. Steve has hundreds of arrests to his career and hundreds of thousands of miles under his wheels. In 2004, Steve was one of the founding members of the Greensburg Police Department Tactical Response Team and continued serving on that team until 2016. In 2015, Steve was promoted to investigator 2 and served in that role for just a year before being promoted to investigator 1, where he had served since March 20th of 2016. For approximately the last eight years, Steve's specialty has been working sex crimes and child crimes. These are investigations that not many of our officers ever desire to work. Steve has been a generalist and firearms instructor since 2000. During that time, he was, has assisted the qualification of many of our current officers and retired officers as well. Steve has completed 1,045 hours of continuing education since the Law Enforcement Training Board began mandating annual updates in 2008. Steve has also amassed a thick folder of certifications in his career. Even though Steve is ending his career at the Greensburg Police Department, his dedication to the craft in this community is continuing. Steve will begin a new career working for the Decatur County Prosecutor's Office as one of the prosecutor's investigators. Not wanting to sit around and wait, Steve will start his new career the week following his retirement at the Greensburg Police Department. Wish him all the best in his endeavors, and if you would join me in congratulating Steve on a successful career.
Thank you, Steve, and it's been a pleasure to get to work with you for a few years, and good luck down the street. We stole Julie from the courthouse, so.
Trade-off.
Thanks, Chief.
Next thing I want to talk to you about is with Steve's retirement, obviously, there is an expense with the amount of overtime, not overtime, comp time, sick time, all that that's amassed over time. And talking with Fire Chief Stormer, he also has a couple of retirements coming up this year. I think we've worked in the past before of doing additional appropriations later in the year. I've talked to Amy that I'll be coming back. Just, this is kind of a heads up, we'll be coming back, both Chief Stormer and I, to help settle those out as the year rounds around, comes around to the end. Any questions about any of that?
Update on the HVAC?
Okay, so, in the Board of Works meeting, they did approve the bid from Cook Mechanical to continue into the process of replacing our HVAC system. We're coming to you tonight to ask for funding for that.
We heard it with the condition that the council approved the additional appropriation.
Correct, thank you. I do have Josh Applin here from DLZ. If you have any questions for him about the bid process or next steps, anything like that?
I believe I put, did I put his letter in your folder? Okay, good, because I knew I put it in the board of works, so. Josh, did you have anything to say? Your letter was recommending that we proceed with the project, that rebidding it didn't seem to be an option.
Correct, correct. And then, we did not recommend the alternate, assuming the chief will be able to move something to standard.
We spent a decent amount of time at the Board of Works meeting last month talking about the option to go talk to the vendor, and Chris reviewed that. We're not allowed to do that, so we've stayed away from that. I guess the question is, do, you've also in your packet, there's an ordinance that Amy's put together for the additional appropriations. You will notice that it is short of $700,000. There's about $120,000 left for this project in the GO bond from '21, when we thought we could do it for a lot less. So, that would make up the difference that isn't listed on the sheet. We've, Chief and I have worked together to identify the funds, the general fund, the Lit Public Safety Fund, the KIMCAP Development Fund, and the KIMCAP Improvement Fund would all contribute money to this project.
When he says he and I, he did, and I listened.
Try to find the money. As we mentioned last month as well, this was intentionally left out of our budgeting process from last year until we knew what the price was going to be. So, it was kind of planned for.
And we're finding this is a very common issue that other communities are having as well, getting HVAC systems quoted, or I'm sorry, bid, and they're also getting much higher results, higher percentages than what even ours was.
Questions for Mike, Josh, or myself? If not, would take a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-02 on first reading?
Second.
Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect.
Thank you, Josh.
We'll bring this back on second reading next month, but we'll go ahead and get the process started. That takes care of our next item. Wow, look at that efficiency. Yep, Ron May, City Engineer, ordinance 2023-03.
Good evening. It originally came to the city's attention that we have an intersection that has anomaly. That intersection would be the intersection of Lincoln Street with Baruchel Lane. And the anomaly is in the northbound Lincoln Street, right turn to eastbound Baruchel Lane. And that particular intersection is currently controlled with an automatic traffic signal and has a separate right turn lane that's divided from the through route on Lincoln Street by a raised concrete island. And the oddity about the intersection is presently there is a traffic signal head facing northbound right-turning traffic on Lincoln Street that is coordinated with the through movements on Lincoln Street. So, when Lincoln Street has a green signal, that right turn lane also has a green signal. Where the anomaly comes in, where traffic is southbound on Lincoln Street, making a left turn to eastbound Baruchel Lane, they may legally pass through the intersection on the green indication. There is a left turn indication there, but after... There is a left turn indication there, but after that left turn indication ends, traffic can continue to make a left turn. So they make the left turn, travel a short distance there at the location of the right turning vehicles coming northbound, not realizing that those right turning vehicles have the right of way as assigned by the traffic signal. This matter was brought to the city's traffic committee. We reviewed, discussed, and recommend to you that the intersection control be modified by removing the signal head for northbound to eastbound right turning vehicles and replace that with the yield sign. This is a more conventional configuration for intersections with separate right turning lanes. They're almost always regulated by yield signs. We feel that making that right turn yield to cross traffic, whether it's the left turn from northbound or cross traffic eastbound on Baruchelle, will be more familiar to motorists and produce a safer environment. So the traffic committee has recommended that effectively the ordinance for yield signs be revised by creating a yield sign for northbound Lincoln Street, right turning to eastbound Baruchelle Lane, and the traffic signal will be taken in our service.
Any questions for Ron?
It's a thorough explanation.
Now, if you could draw us a picture.
He said it very well.
I should have.
I'll make a motion we pass ordinance 2023-3.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Can we suspend the rules? I'll make a motion we suspend the rules on 2023-3.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Daryl to suspend the rules. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion we pass ordinance 2023-3 on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made. And quicker, Rick. It's a motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Sure.
Where will, where will the yield sign be?
It will be on the right. It will be on the southeast corner of the right turn lane.
I'm assuming that's in compliance with the manual?
That is the proper location, on the right, immediately prior to the intersection.
Thank you. We had our joint meeting a couple weeks ago for the energy savings contract project, and I have, there was a couple questions asked then about the financing. I've spoken to a bank, but I didn't get any answer that I think is not their fault. I just don't think I have enough information yet to present maybe what our next steps are going forward are. Jamie did ask some questions in the previous meeting about carbon credits that I'm going to ask as well. So I think what we should do is just kind of table this for another month, let me get some more information. I'll provide it to you in advance, assuming I have it. But do you have any other questions from our meeting a couple weeks ago that you would like for me to try to get answers to over the next month? We do have to have a 37-day advertisement for the RFQ, so it's very unlikely that our meeting is actually 30, it won't be 37 days. So we have kind of a two-month window after we say go with the RFQ. If you recall, I asked that question, we are not under any legal obligation to continue once we receive the RFQ. So we're really looking at a three to four-month window from once we say go anyway. So I don't think a month to get more information and make sure that I and we have a better understanding of the finances is too much to ask on anybody's part, so. My recommendation is that we just continue this conversation over the next month. If you have anything, let me know.
Kevin asked if they could break down what the solar would save and what the LEDs would save.
Break down the, the street lights and where solar panels, yes, thank you.
If you think of something, please just email me or get ahold of me. There being no other new business, we will move on into the boards and commission updates. Jamie?
We approved the HVAC bid with the assumption that we, or well, with the condition that the council would approve additional appropriations. So that was the first thing on the list. We got the update from the Veritas group that we got tonight. Mark Carman came and gave a Tree City Festival kind of update, and then we approved street closures for that. Chief McNeely came and announced the retirement that we did tonight as well. Chief Stormer came, we approved the purchase of a fire inspector truck from Fleetwood Chevy. Sorry, I'm just trying to, I lost my spot here, going down, looking where I was at. That was, the bid was still good by the way, Chief.
Yes, I did ask to do.
Okay, so the bill was still good. We, authorization to sign fair measures contract for professional development, that was a training service for the fire department contract we approved, and then sealed bids for the 2008 Ford Expedition. We ended up accepting a bid from New Point Fire Department for $5,137.87. We accepted sealed bid openings for the 2007 GMC from the street department, and that went to KFAV for $6,887. And then we talked about the energy program as well.
Any questions for Jamie on any of that?
Rick?
Okay, Main Street, they're going for a grant for either an architect or an engineering study for the building on 112 South Franklin. I think that's one we, they're going, get it, now they took this $10,000 grant that they could use for, like I said, the engineering study, give ideas for what it could be used for, for the architect, what it needs to be running up to code.
Is that the building, did we give that to the Washington Township?
Well, we tried, but it.
Okay, okay. No, no, I'm just asking, so I don't know how that, okay.
It was never transferred because the board never accepted it, because that was a part of the whole bond conversation they were having that didn't go through?
Okay.
So we still, we never, it never left our possession? And I did ask the former trustee if that whole thing was all, and he said yes, so it's all been revoked.
Harmer's Market is going to go again this year. They're going to, few changes, but that's still ongoing. They had two ribbon cutting ceremonies this past month. The Friends of Fred's food truck is coming back this year. They don't have a date yet. And the annual meeting should be the end of March. And then we'll try to get them in to give an update of last year.
The light month, planning commission did not have a meeting, nor did the EDC.
Vieta?
Solid Waste, the meeting, we opened bids for recycling, and we're going to have a new recycling company pick our recycling up and it's awarded to Rockgate. So they're under contract for three years. We'll see how it goes. It's quite a bit, it's quite a bit more expensive. It was kind of a disqualification type thing. There's, you gotta check all the boxes when you put in a bid, and there were boxes that weren't checked, so they were, basically Bestway was disqualified, so they went with Rockgate.
Do you usually save container?
Actually, no. We get new containers and see how it goes. They got three years.
I don't think, I don't think they've rolled out a timeline for the transition. I was trying to find that out, or do you know?
For some reason, I was thinking, I was thinking March.
I know they had reached out to Mark about storing the toders, but I don't know. Did you have any dates? Did they give you any dates?
We were out looking at the buildings the other day for utilities, and we checked, and they have not put a single toder in the building yet, so apparently they haven't gotten it from the manufacturer. I know they're expecting 4,000 of them here shortly.
I don't think a date has actually been set for that.
Are they going to be similar in size or going to be the exact same size or?
Exact same size. It's actually going to be identical to ours with a different color lid. The body's going to be the same color. I tend to like the idea, I liked it better with a different color, but it's not, it's going to be the exact green, green of ours with a lime green lid.
That won't confuse anybody. Go ahead.
Listen, that won't confuse anybody.
What's going to be the disposition of the totes that we have, that we won't be using?
Maybe they'll recycle them, I don't know.
They belong to Bestway.
Yeah, they belong to Bestway.
That's why they all have the Bestway logo. Bestway furnished those as part of the original contract, when they were worked the contract, so they're theirs. My understanding, what they're doing with theirs is they, because they use them for trash collection, their intentions are to pull the lids off of them, put their standard lids on them, and continue to use them throughout operation, somewhere in the state of Indiana or at the state.
Just thought maybe they might have a special event out at Fair.
No, they're taking them and keeping them.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
That's basically all of us.
Daryl?
The redevelopment commission had several things that we talked about. The mayor came to talk to us about hiring a property marketing person from out of Indianapolis. We're talking about that. Ron May came and we discussed the residential development project, which seems to be right on schedule. And he also talked about a follow-up on the redevelopment commission plan list, and on Monday, Ken Dornic, myself, the mayor, the EDC, Director Brian Robbins will be meeting, the first of probably several meetings, coming up with a new list, project list for the redevelopment commission. We also took two bids for an architectural lease, and I can't remember who we gave it to, but it was the best price. And we signed a rezoning application for the RDC property. We also talked about a multi-use path that could possibly go over State Road 3, so it's just in the infancy stages there, but stay tuned.
State Road 3 over where? Like what location?
We really haven't decided yet.
That's part of it, and then some of it's the discussion about the old rail corridor that the utilities run through. Kind of behind COVA, between COVA and the New Street campus. That's one location. But where Ron has reached out to one of our consultants to get a preliminary meeting on the books about that too. But we'll talk about it more on Monday in our committee meeting as well. Anything else, Daryl? Any questions for Daryl?
Oh, thank you.
Rick, did you, I'll put you on the spot. Did you want to talk about your high, your dam, high hazard survey, your emergency response plan?
Oh, it's a, sorry.
I'll put you on the spot, and I should have gave you a heads up, but I didn't think about it until right now.
It's an incident, an emergency action plan in July of 2022, we're mandated to do through the state. So we hired Christopher Burke Engineering, which did our dam inspection, which is completed now. So I did contact them, signed the contract, and they'll be getting ahold of me shortly to start on that project.
Put you on the spot the second time. Do you want to talk about the lead and copper rule that you have been following as well since you're?
Well, the only thing set in stone right, well, let me give you a little background. In 1992, the lead and copper rule come into effect. Back in the 90s, we spent day after day after day putting new service lines on our side to get rid of the old galvanized. When I say lead, I'm really typically talking about galvanized lines. Well, EPA decided that instead of us being responsible from the main to the meter pit, we're now, they're going to make us responsible from the meter pit to the house. When I say responsible, I don't necessarily mean that we're going to go in and put any water line. That, that part of the rule's still up in the air. But you probably seen my guys out the last, I don't know, six months doing inventory. We had to submit all of our inventory on the property owner's side to EPA by August or October of 2024, I can't remember. So the, the rule can actually still change on how we're going to notify homeowners or how we're going to handle the part of them replacing the lines. Either, you know, we give them that, we hire a plumber to go in, we put it on their water bill, we just have to notify them that this is what you've got, it's bad, or it can be bad if you don't replace your galvanized lines. That part of the rule can still change, and I'll try to keep you up to date. Any questions? It's, it's, there's a lot too, a lot.
That was a better water board update than I could have done.
Yeah.
I'll put you on the agenda.
It's all right.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The aviation board, they're making progress on tree removal and tree trimming at both ends of the runway. They're on schedule to do paving and lighting project yet this year, with the idea that construction is complete by the end of the year. I think that's all the update I have there. Do you want to talk about insurance committee, Amy?
Yeah, our first insurance committee meeting. We have representative from each of the departments, and we decided, when I say we, I mean, Julie, the mayor, and myself, decided to go with not just department heads, department heads have enough, but we also thought it would be good to have a representative and a voice different than just the department head to be able to share information and that, that we talk about, and then also for them to bring information to this meeting. So the purpose of this, and we are going to meet monthly, is to discuss our current benefits, maybe what we're lacking that we need, and maybe things we have that we don't need or that are not worth having, giving to our employees. So we want to make sure that we are providing the best benefit package that we can for our employees. It was a great meeting. It was, it was a really great meeting.
Next month, our insurance provider, broker, TPA, middle person is going to come and talk to the group as well, and try to give them a better understanding of the finances and where and how and why it's funded the way it is, and the amount that it takes us to do that. And then we'll continue proceeding forward with that. Lindsay Jobe, who is the family nurse practitioner, who's the new member of the Board of Works, also serves on the committee, and she brought a lot of great insight to that meeting as well, because we were talking about lab testing and why certain things are done a certain way, and she was able to provide behind-the-scenes info to that, so that worked out well. Any questions for Amy on that? Julie's been doing a great job of keeping that project moving forward as well. Okay, council, anything else? If not, take a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion's been made by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thanks, everyone.